It's my turn.
Looks like we're live. All right, we'll come to order. Today is the Wednesday, March 3rd, 2010. Regular
February 26, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Would everyone stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments or corrections for the approval of the minutes of February 17th?
With approval.
We have a motion for approval and support. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Yossian?
Actually, is this for the minutes?
Yes.
No, there's one thing I had an issue with.
All right. No problem.
And it's for the vote of the minutes. I don't believe I was here for the vote.
Oh.
Yeah. I was abstaining for that. Says abstain.
Oh, as opposed to abstain, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Hmm.
All right. Backing up, you'll amend your motion. You'll
Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Yossian?
Aye.
And Chairman Kane?
Aye, and voted five to zero. The minutes of February 17th were approved as noted. Under Agenda Item 5, Oral Communications, I don't believe I have any cards for that. I do not. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7A or 7, New Business. It's zoning change. Case numbers PZON 2009-08 and -09. It's the proposed advertising sign overlay zone that may be placed in areas of the city designated Downtown Specific Plan DSP and located within boundaries of the Central Glendale Development Project area. It's a proposed map zone change located within the gallery and town center districts of the Downtown Specific Plan bounded by West Broadway to the north, South Brand Boulevard to the east, Colorado Street to the south, and South Columbus Street to the west. The applicants are the Americana brand and the Glendale Galleria. And it is a proposal for the development of an advertising signage zoning, signage overlay zone, rather, a zone map change to allow the ASOZ within the boundaries of the gallery and town center districts of the Downtown Specific Plan and Zone Text Amendment to Chapter 30.33 signs. The recommendation is that we review the proposed zoning test and map amendments for zone change and provide recommendations to the City Council. Staff represented by Mr. Kiesel. Roger.
Thank you. It looks like you've discovered our first little typo.
You want zoning test?
It's a text amendment. Sorry. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The item before you this evening is a zone change request to create a new advertising signage overlay zone, the ASOZ, within the city's zoning ordinance. Place this overlay zone within the gallery and town center districts of the DSP and then amend Chapter 30.33, which is our sign code, to make the proposed zone change consistent with the city's sign regulation. So there are three components of the project. The Glendale Galleria and Americana brand jointly submitted a zone change application to establish an ASOZ and place it on both developments. This ASOZ would allow them to place on their respective buildings wall signs that do not meet current zoning code standard, zoning code standards, four typical wall signs. And this includes deviation from the number and from the size standards that are currently prescribed in our sign ordinance. Additionally, it is also seeking to allow non-accessory signs. Initially, 17 signs were proposed as part of the application, and these signs were described in the staff report. On November 10th of last year, the planning staff presented a report to the City Council Redevelopment Agency regarding the proposed zone change request and seeking their direction regarding the project, regarding the request. At the meeting, concerns were raised regarding the location of certain signs. Most notably, two signs were initially proposed at the intersection of Brand Boulevard and Broadway, the old Mervyn's Building. These signs have now been eliminated from the current request. Additionally, the council agency also expressed concerns regarding proposed signs fronting the driveway leading to the Americana brand parking garage, which faces Brand Boulevard, and the two signs located on each side of the bridge that crosses Central Avenue. A sunset clause, potential criteria to locate in an ASOZ, and potential regulations for signs allowed in an ASOZ were also discussed. At the end of the meeting, council made a motion to direct staff to develop an overlay zone based on their comments at the meeting. As a result of the council agency meeting, staff has drafted a proposed text amendment to create a new, to create new zone regulations for an ASOZ to be added to the zoning ordinance and has prepared a proposed amendment to the zone map to place the ASOZ within the boundaries of the gallery and town center districts of the DSP, the Downtown Specific Plan. The proposed text amendment creating the new zone regulations is attached to this report as Exhibit 6. This new chapter sets forth the description and purpose of the ASOZ, the application requirements for the ASOZ, and the procedures to install wall signs allowed by an ASOZ, among several items. It also defines terms for various items unique to this proposed ASOZ. As some background, during their November 10th, 2009 policy discussion, the council agency expressed some interest in allowing some cross-advertising between the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand. Under the city's current sign regulations, advertising between these two developments would not be permitted because non-accessory signs are prohibited in our zoning code. As defined, accessory signs are any sign which carries advertisement incidental and related to the primary use of the premises or site on which it is located, including signs or sign devices indicating the business transacted at, services rendered, goods sold or produced on the premises by either the owner, occupant, or developer of the premises or site. And then non-accessory signs is just the inverse of that and is defined as any sign that carries advertisement other than that of an accessory sign. So to address the potential council agency interest in cross-advertising, the ASOZ proposes a new definition or a definition for an ASOZ accessory sign. And this definition, and I can read it all if you want, but basically it's the same definition as what our zoning code includes as an accessory sign, with the exception of inserting some language or within the ASOZ, which allows, will allow for the cross-advertising. So that definition, I'll just read it real quick, is a sign allowed by an ASOZ which carries advertisement incidental and related only to the primary use of the premises or within the ASOZ, including signs or sign devices indicating the business transacted at, services rendered, goods sold or produced on the premises, and this is the new language, or within the ASOZ by either the owner, occupant, developer of the premises. So that allows the cross-advertising component. There was also a definition included for viewed primarily from a pedestrian street. This phrase means the sign may be seen with greater ease from a public street than, that is, that is a primary pedestrian street as designated in official city document than from streets which are not so designated. And this definition was included and is important to ensure that signs will contribute to and are compatible with predominantly pedestrian-oriented scale and function of pedestrian-oriented streets in the area. There are other definitions included, but I wanted to just highlight those two. The new ASOZ chapter also sets criteria to place in an ASOZ. This criteria was suggested initially at the council agency meeting and refined as a result of their feedback. The current proposed criteria to locate in an ASOZ is contained in the staff report and was drafted to eliminate potential visual blight, focus on intense retail districts, which eliminates potential impacts on the lower intensity residential areas of the city, and enable the scale of the signs to appropriately fit within the context of large retail buildings on which they're proposed. The criteria was also drafted to prevent signs from being placed on top buildings. And then finally, the proposed criteria was chosen in order to promote additional economic development and private reinvestment in the core of the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project area and to prevent the reintroduction of blighting influences due to the loss of retail businesses during prolonged or persistent economic downturns. As currently proposed, a criteria for located in an ASOZ would permit the placement of this overlay zone within the Galleria and Town Center districts of the DSP. The council also discussed potential regulations for signs permitted in an ASOZ. Potential regulations are contained in the staff report and are based on comments received at the November meeting. Signs proposed as part of an ASOZ would need to comply with the proposed regulations as discussed in the staff report. With the exception of one sign, all the signs proposed by the Galleria and the Americana brand would comply with these regulations. The Americana brand proposes to include one sign on the building facade fronting the driveway leading from Brand Boulevard to the Americana brand parking garage. This sign is viewed primarily from Brand Boulevard, which is defined in the DSP as a primary pedestrian street. Typically overly large and non-accessory signs are not, are, they are automobile-oriented and as opposed to pedestrian-oriented, and they do not intrinsically create a pedestrian-friendly environment, which we're trying to enable on Brand. Additionally, the proposed sign would cover the elevator tower windows and obscure architectural elements of this part of the building. Because this sign does not comply with the criteria proposed for the ASOZ, staff does not recommend approval of this particular sign. However, the impacts of the proposed sign may be eliminated or otherwise mitigated if the sign is incorporated as an architectural element into the elevator tower in such a way that it contributes to the pedestrian character of Brand and the area in general. As previously mentioned, members of the council agency discuss the merits of the sunset clause for the ASOZ. This clause would eliminate the ASOZ after a certain period of time, subject to further extension by the City Council. In their November 10th motion, the council agency directed staff to include provisions for a sunset date for the overlay zone between 18 and 24 months. Language has been drafted into the text amendment in the ordinance, I think Exhibit 6. To authorize the option of providing for a sunset clause if the council so chooses. Staff has also investigated the possibility of entering into a development agreement with the property owners in the ASOZ as a condition of extending the ASOZ for some additional period of time. Such a development agreement would provide additional certainty to the property owners that the ASOZ standards wouldn't change during the term of the agreement and could also allow the city to require the ASOZ sign applicants to share in the ASOZ sign ordinance. As part of the proposed zone change, the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand are requesting a newly created ASOZ to be placed on the gallery and town center districts of the DSP. This is sort of the second component of the project. Exhibit 7, which was attached to the report and is actually also the map on the board, delineates where the ASOZ would be placed if the Zone Text Amendment creating the ASOZ and the Zone Map Amendment placing this overlay zone is approved. And that's basically all of the Americana brand and the majority, the vast majority of the Glendale Galleria. There's a small part of the Galleria that is not located in the Galleria district and is not included in the proposed overlay map amendment. Exhibit 8, which is also posted on the board and attached to your staff report, shows the locations and sizes of the signs proposed as part of the zone change, as part of the zone map amendment. Proposed framing material and lighting fixtures are described in the staff report and will need to be submitted for review and approval by the Director of Community Planning. Should the Planning Commission be inclined to recommend approval of the proposed zone change, there are some amendments that would be necessary to Chapter 30.33, which is a sign ordinance, and this is sort of the third component of the project. These amendments would make the sign regulations consistent with the proposed text and map amendments, and they were described in the staff report. The project was evaluated pursuant to the Environmental, California Environmental Quality Act. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the proposed project. The initial study found that the proposed project would substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of the site and its surroundings without imposing mitigation measures on the project. To mitigate this impact, a mitigation measure was incorporated into the project, which prohibits signs allowed by the ASOZ from facing primary pedestrian streets as assigned in the DSP unless the sign contributes to or reinforces the pedestrian environment by means of providing direction or creating an attraction to pedestrians or incorporated, is incorporated into the architecture of the building. Another mitigation was also incorporated, which prohibits signs from obscuring fenestration as a result, or, I'm sorry, fenestration or other openings or architectural elements as a result of installing of any signs. A draft resolution certifying and adopting the negative declaration was attached as Exhibit And actually, I just noticed this right prior to the meeting, we should have attached a resolution of the Planning Commission adopting, recommending adoption of the mitigated neg-dec. That was not included in your packet. I have one here, so. As of the date of the staff report, staff received one comment. That was included in your packet, and the city's response to the comment was also attached. The comment period for the notice of intent of the mitigated neg-dec for the project began on February 6th of this year. After release of the document, staff amended the mitigated negative declaration. Specifically, the changes to the mitigated negative declaration consisted of modifying the wording of the mitigation measure A.3.1 to make the language internally consistent with the staff report and ordinances associated with the project. Those changes were included in your packet. This wording change is to allow the possibility of wall signs that, through their incorporation as architectural elements, may better contribute to the environment of designated primary pedestrian streets, which was mitigation measure A.3.1. The assessment of impacts on wall signs which cover windows or other architectural elements did not change. The changes to the mitigated negative declaration constitute minor technical changes or additions that do not trigger any of the conditions described in SEQA, calling for the preparation of any additional analysis or recollection. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the proposed text amendment and map amendments and provide a recommendation to the City Council Redevelopment Agency. Proposed draft motion is attached for commission consideration recommending certification and adoption of the mitigated neg-dec, which is here, and adoption of the two ordinances, which was attached to the staff report. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just for the housekeeping purposes, as you're giving presentation, you alluded to some of these signs that you are not recommending, or I just want to make sure that has it been removed from the proposal or, you know, as a staff you're not recommending. So I just want to go over that with you right now. At Americana, you talked about, I guess it's a panel one in front of the elevator, I guess, shaft?
Right.
Has that been modified, or you're not recommending that at all?
What, sure. That is, that is part of the application. Unlike the two signs on the old Mervyn's Building, that wasn't, those two signs were initially approved or were initially proposed. They've been removed from this application.
This is from the Galleria site?
Right. The sign that you're referring to was a concern at the Council Redevelopment Agency that the sign is, continues to be part of this application. Staff is not recommending approval of the sign in its current configuration because it doesn't contribute to, it faces the Brand Boulevard and doesn't contribute to the pedestrian-oriented nature of the street. It also obscures the windows and our other architectural features. The location may be fine if that portion of the building is modified so that any proposed sign doesn't obscure features like windows and is modified such that the sign really becomes more integral with the building and functions as, you know, a pedestrian feature.
So has that been relayed back to Americana?
It has. Yeah, it has.
And so that, but they have not responded?
They have not provided revisions to that sign at that particular location.
Going back to Galleria, you said they have, then I guess, removed, I guess, the signs number two. I guess that's at the corner of
It is in the packet.
Right, because that's part of, that was part of their initial application. That's been removed.
Okay, what about number three, you know, the bridge?
The bridge, that was part of their original application. That has, those signs have not been removed from the application, and those signs were also a concern, the locations of those signs were also a concern of the Council Redevelopment Agency.
So to restate, then, the only signs that's been removed from the application is number two, two signs, but rest of it is still part of the application?
Correct.
Okay. Housekeeping.
No problem. Other questions for staff? I guess now is a good time as any to ask. I have a couple of questions that are kind of historical in nature. Didn't the, what's been the history over the last two or three years with the Galleria and posting signs without permit and so on? Wasn't there some actions going on as related to that?
Last year, I believe, the Galleria posted four or five signs sort of in the entrance courtyard on Central that faces the Americana. Initially, I believe they were, they were done without a permit, or they were installed without a permit. I believe they received a variance from the Redevelopment Agency to allow them to remain to be installed. They were removed for a period of time, and I believe November roughly of this year, another variance was approved by the Redevelopment Agency to allow those signs to again be installed up to, I want to say January 15th, but I'm not sure of that date.
There was like a seasonal variance?
Yeah.
September.
Yeah. Yeah. That's the only thing, those are the only things I am familiar with.
And is, and let me just ask Mr. Higani, just because maybe institutional memory's a little clearer. Was that recitation pretty accurate? Is it related to the first instance?
Correct. That was accurate with one slight modification. So the council only gave a temporary permit with a sunset clause, a date that, by which the sign would have to be removed.
Okay. And then, and maybe this might revert to you as well, Mr. Higani, but whoever on staff. I'd like to revisit a little bit the approval process and the design and the conversations related to the Americana brand, because I know during the design and project evolution, the idea of signage being placed on the side of Americana was a key component in the conversation. And I'd like to just be refreshed a little bit on what was said as the project was being
I will have a stab at this. Initially, you're accurate. As part of the complete sign program that was incorporated in the Town Center Specific Plan as it was proposed, there were signs, advertising signs, that would be similar to the ones that are being proposed today as part of the program. However, in the discussions with the City Council and the agency, they were then removed from the original proposal.
All right.
That's accurate. So they were not as part, approved as part of the final version of the Town Center Specific Plan.
All right. So at that time, and again, things change, but at that time, it had been the considered opinion and direction not to include signs?
At that time, that was the sentiment. Correct.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Landrigan?
I just would like to know, because I know there was a complete sign plan approved, why the total square footage, including the complete sign plan with this, is not presented to us? Because to me, that seems key in making any decision on an advertisement sign zone, advertising zone. Because no, these signs are not standalone signs. They're in concert with other signs that are there. And that total picture and square footage is not presented to us.
We can see if, before the end of tonight, we can get a sense of what that number is, but the point well taken. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee.
I have one more comment. It's regarding, I guess it's not really part of the proposal here, but I read in the language that like LED signs were to be, you know, not part of this proposal. But, you know, just looking at this proposal here, we got really wall signage everywhere, you know, surrounding the building and all that. And, you know, I've seen successes with the LED signs because of its functionality, because of its flexibility of, you know, being able to really program the panel. I think if you put it statistically, you know, where pedestrian-friendly places, locations, you could achieve all this, I guess, cross-ad，则tizement and the purpose, I guess, of what you're trying to achieve. It's just merely a suggestion, my observation here. Would, you know, that type of technology, which has been around for over a decade now, maybe more than a decade, and I don't know if that was something that was discussed, you know, entertained as a part of this, you know, the signage, you know, proposal. You know, why are we still, you know, working with the still picture or fashion signages when we have, you know, technology that can provide us with elimination of a lot of these, you know, signs here?
Let's ask Mr. Higani, and it may be a question of small steps, Mr. Lee, but, Mr. Higani, were motion signs, LEDs, backlit signs, was that part of the conversation leading up to this with council recently?
Not as, not per se. So those types of signs were not a part of the overall discussion. I must say that staff has had some concerns and we are aware of those new technologies. However, that is part of the discussion that we've had regarding the elevator tower and then how not only architectural, but maybe some technological methods could be used to make that a more of an interesting signage that could be incorporated. With regard to the rest of the project, I must say that the reason that staff has not recommended to step beyond this, we first had to deal with the idea of introducing these signs to begin with at the signs to begin with at the more conventional way, to see if that was even feasible before we can entertain the ideas of technologies that might.
Small steps.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Higani. Any other questions at this time for staff?
Just one question. When we talk about pedestrian throughout this, the word pedestrian scale is never used, and it is a typical combination. And to me, I'm curious as to why in the pedestrian discussion here, you don't talk about pedestrian scale anywhere.
I can answer that. I can attempt to answer that. Because when we talk about pedestrian scale, we're really talking about size. In this case, we're dealing with signs as they may actually in themselves become an architectural feature that can stand alone and, and not be so much a component of, of this pedestrian scale as we're used to it. When we talk about pedestrian scale in the Planariz language, we, we talk about things that are visible at the eye level when you're walking and that are seen and can be read at that level. So, that is the conventional way that we, we talk about pedestrian scale. In this case, I must say, to a certain extent, we avoided using that verbiage because, for example, if we wanted to redesign the tower in a way that is, it's pedestrian-friendly at the scale that it is, is that possible? We did not want to say it's, it's completely impossible. However, if we wanted to say pedestrian scale, we would be limiting the ideas, the creative ideas, to what could be installed on the, on the elevator tower at the, at the walking level. So, we, to a certain extent, we wanted to leave the options open to allow the creative minds to come up with ideas we may not have thought about.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, at this point then, we'll.
Actually, let me, let me step in here. You were all emailed the revised ordinance amending the zone map today. If you didn't bring your copy, we've got copies here just in case. I mean, it was, it was emailed to you all in the late morning, I think. Do you all have the copies?
I printed out and read it, but I left at the office, so I would like a copy.
Okay.
And why, was there anything else, by the way?
That was it, yeah.
Sure, because I'm about, you know?
Well, I'll interject again if I, if I think.
All right. All right, I have two speaker cards that basically represent the applicant. I have another card that was labeled as 327 Salem Street.
I think he left.
It was Eric?
It was over there.
And he's, and he's left, okay. And I wasn't sure if I missed somebody from Oral Communications or what. All right. Well, I only have three speaker cards, so if you're intending to speak, this would be a good time to fill in. Otherwise, we'll let the applicant, Mr. Lemo, and Mr. Hirsch, as you may wish to speak, come forward.
Good evening, Chair Kane, Commissioners. My name's Rick Lemo, and I'm with Caruso Affiliated. Thank you so much for your time tonight. First, before we start anything else, I'd like to thank staff for their hard work and their patience in explaining, explaining to us a lot of the methods and the process over the last six months or so. They've really done a yeoman's job when it comes to understanding what the interpretations and wishes of councils were, of, of City Council was, and also of some of council's concerns. First and foremost, in regards to the sign on the elevator tower, we are actually conferring with staff right now and will have something worked out, we anticipate, before we go to council, so that we do have one that is respectfully meeting the architectural guidelines and the pedestrian-friendly nature that, that the city wants to have at that, at that particular location. I will tell you that in regards to the sunset clause, while we did know that that was a level of consideration, this morning, we were anywhere between surprised, chagrined, and absolutely shocked at what the nature of the sunset clause was when we found out about it this morning as well. When you take into consideration that there will be over a $200,000 investment to ready the buildings for this unbilled signage, and the professionals in the industry, because that's not our normal way, that's not our normal business, it takes four and a half years just to amortize that expenditure. And so, as you can imagine, a, a one-year sunset clause actually stops us from selling any of that signage on the property, but even more so with a 30-day exclusion before it can, it can even be, be taken place, can be achieved before there's a renewal process, would, would have an advertiser say, why would I advertise at all? Why would I go through the expense of creating that, that ad and not be able to use it? And so, you know, we believe that that is an inherent problem. Not that the, you know, we prefer no sunset clause at all, and originally, the concern of a sunset clause was more about, let's, you know, let's, let's nail down what the content is, let's nail down what parameters you want to put on yourselves and, and what we can expect. Fundamentally, the goals of City Council were not necessarily tied to a specific sunset clause, but the consideration of having one. I think one of the most important elements we should remember in regards to council and in regards to consideration of a sunset clause is a trust that we've been, we've built. It's important to know, not only have we been in this process for nine years and operated, it'll be in May now, it'll be two years that the Americana brand is open, but in addition to that, we're deeply involved in this committee, in this community as stakeholders as well. I'm the incoming president of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I sit as the president of the Bid Steering Committee, and other members of our team are involved with nonprofits and all. So, from a trust standpoint, it's, it's not like you're not going to see us either at the grocery store or, or, you know, over, or at Nordstrom. And so, I think it's important to keep that in mind. So, while we appreciate and support staff's report, we are opposed fundamentally to the, to the sunset clause without some, you know, real significant differences and different changes, and certainly not less than, than perhaps five years with a four-year review. But, I think we also want to get to what the fundamental concerns of council was. I think there's also one other thing to keep in mind. We brought this up at council, because everybody's spoken about history, and I think with all the people in the room, we could probably have different revisions of history and different versions of what people thought that history was. But, one thing about the history that we know for sure is that throughout the process, we didn't have a tremendous relationship with our neighbors across the street at the Glendale Galleria. This is a wonderful opportunity and a manifestation of what we've been doing for the last year. We try and do co-marketing, we try and be respectful of one another's challenges, and to quickly forget the bitter history that may have existed and to see that we are, like any two good, responsible businesses, taking advantage of an opportunity to perform well for the betterment of, of Glendale, as well as ourselves, but for the betterment of Glendale overall. And so, with that, I would ask you to go along with staff recommendation. Please keep in mind our consideration that we are in fact taking care of the, the concerns they had regarding architectural, respect of an architectural element on the, on the elevator shaft, but that we are opposed to a sunset clause fundamentally, probably with what we've heard from the industry, could live with something that's a five-year sunset clause with a four-year review that gives someone a, a one-year opportunity to know that it's not going to go on. And with that, I thank you for your time and make myself available for specific questions. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? I'm seeing none at this time. Staff, any further comments as it relates to the applicant's presentation? I suspect very brief, if any.
I don't have any.
I, I have a couple of answers regarding the questions that you gave, and, and I could say a little bit more about the sunset clause if you'd like.
That would be fine, and then we still have, Mr. Hirsch, did you want to speak during your presentation or not?
You know, I'm available for questions.
Just for questions, all right. All right. And then we'll, and then we do have another speaker card, but we'll let Mr. Higani go for now.
Right. Mr. Tatabolosian from the Community of Redevelopment Housing Department just gave me some numbers to answer a question. For general growth, the approximate square footage of signage excluding the Broadway brand signs that were originally in the plan but have been since removed would be approximately 5,800 square feet of signage. For the Americana brand, without the elevator, elevator tower, we're talking about approximately 3,400 square feet of signage. If the elevator tower is included, that's just approximately 900 square feet of signage as proposed, which we're not recommending as proposed, so. So, to, that would be about 3,000, over 3,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right.
With regard to the sunset clause?
The sunset clause is provided to you as an idea because the City Council raised it. In terms of how long of a sunset clause we should recommend, we don't necessarily have an attachment. The idea of the sunset clause is twofold. One is to have enough time to see the potential impacts of the signage that we haven't thought about, and then be able to address that. And then, then to address that perhaps through a development agreement. And then the other piece, of course, is the, the idea of any opportunities for community, for benefits to the community in other ways, including revenue sharing. But that, that's the only reason. We do not, period of the sunset clause is set.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higani. The only other speaker card I have is.
Where on your property, would you like a sign on?
At this time, we have three areas. One is on Colorado Street, which we have the building, and that's where office and lobby area is. And also on Orange Avenue, where it's adjacent to the Americana Movie Theater, we have a wall right there, too, it's three stories high. And we also have the alleyway, which we'd like to consider, which is also three-story high, and there's an area of square footage there. Wouldn't be a considerable square footage compared to the signage size that they're proposing, but at least it only makes sense to include this in the overlay.
Have you talked to staff to be?
You know, there wasn't much time for me to prepare for this. However, I did make a phone call to Mr. Kiesel, and we talked briefly today. I did let him know I was going to be here today to kind of see if we can be included in this. Seems only fair.
I consider this a little bit free form in terms of us not necessarily having a hearing, but making, you know, a recommendation to council. Planning staff, had you thought about this before? Is there, is there an initial opinion of that?
Well, as it's currently proposed, the overlay, the advertising signage overlay zone was proposed for areas of intense retail, entertainment, theater, store, restaurant activity. That's how it's been proposed, and that's why the Golden Key Hotel was carved, well, one of the reasons why it was carved out of, you know, the, the overlay zone.
If, if I may, I add, Mr. Chair, also, if you notice, in as proposed, staff's recommendation excludes areas that are residential, even in the, in the overlay zoning district. So, the, the use makes a huge difference in terms of what's appropriate as incorporated into the use. And, and then, that's the first piece. And then, the architectural piece also plays a role. So, there are several different criteria that are at play here, which would not necessarily include the Golden Key Hotel, especially in the way that it's built.
All right, I, I hear what you're saying. To me, a blank wall is a blank wall if it impacted, you know, if it impacted somebody that's spending a night or two in a hotel room, you know, and again, I, I also look at the difference between a hotel versus, let's say, a residential apartment, where you're talking long-term. I, I really question, even with overlay zones, I question the idea of carving out notches into something. And it just seems to me that when we're already allowing the Galleria and the Americana potentially to do a certain synergy, being able to advertise and be able to gain some sort of economic benefit by using, by making use of the blank walls, it just seems to me to be a little unfair not to extend that to a, a property owner that's literally within the rectangle. You guys will need to work through it, but that's my two cents as far as the speaker's comments. Ms. Landrigan?
And I might say, I appreciate the speaker coming in with a proactive response instead of a reactive response, and, I mean, I think that works to your advantage, because I, I can see the Golden Key being very affected by all of the signage there in an area that they would not typically have had. And to come in and say, we'd rather be included instead of excluded instead of complaining, I think that's classy.
Thank you, Ms. Landrigan.
Well, I'm sorry? And, and to build on that, actually, seizing your whole residential argument, Mr. Higani? We're putting signs on commercial uses immediately adjacent to this residential use, so I, I would really question the impact that you've just broached between the adjacent property and his property, if you follow me on that argument. So, there's a certain weakness there that you probably ought to consider. Okay. Anything else for the speaker? All right, thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards, such as it is. Mr. Lemo, you're allowed a rebuttal period?
No.
No, thank you? Well, let me, let me ask you a question then, sir.
Yes, sir.
Got a problem with the Gold Key having advertising on the property?
We actually have no position on it at all. We, we have no position on it.
So, you don't object?
The only objection that I could see that we would have is if, if inclusion into the overlay zone, which we have, you know, responsibly taken our time and quite a bit of time going through, if it would hold it up at all, then we would have a problem, because it's sort of someone coming late who never expressed an interest. Other than that, we have no objection.
So, you don't anticipate you or anyone from your staff making little phone calls to staff behind the scenes, saying, don't include Gold Key? You're going to be totally neutral on this?
I would tell you that we, yeah, we, we don't do that with staff. No city staff puts up with us doing anything like that, trust me.
You know, I, I believe you, and yet I find it hard to believe.
I'd give staff more credit.
Well, I mean, everyone, you know, everyone has, you know, freedom of speech. You're certainly entitled to pick up the phone and.
Yeah, I, I would say the, the one thing I'd ask you just to, to recall a little bit is that virtually everything that we've done from the very beginning here in town has been pretty proactive. We don't want to have a negative impact or a negative take on our neighbors. If you know, we believe very, very much so in competition. I would just say that, again, in, in the interest of fairness and process, you have two entities who've spent a lot of time and some, some significant dollars putting together this plan as requested. So, my only request would be that we would not hold up the process at all. But other than that, I think that's the city's purview and the city's right to make those decisions.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah. I was surprised that the Galleria people did not come up and talked about this number three, which the staff is recommending against. Do you have anything to say about the signs that's going?
Wouldn't be right for me, for me to say anything about it, but.
Mr. Hirsch, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I'm good. Absolutely.
Sure. The issue that came up, I think you're referring to the bridge signs?
Bridge signs, yes.
The problem that council had with that when we first went in in November was there was concerns, especially with Laura Friedman, regarding pedestrian. She was under the impression that there was a pedestrian walkway close by the bridge, and that it might interfere, there might be some kind of accidents or things like that. But, we've since gone back and cleared up that issue, showed her where the, the walkways are between the two properties, and she didn't have any concerns after that that we're aware of. That was the main concern with that, unless.
Yeah, there were, there were safety issues.
Can, no, they said they cleared up the safety issues and some concerns that the city had. Now, you're still coming back to recommend against it?
Well, no, we're not, we're not recommending for or against the bridge signs. What, what we said was during, during the, the policy meeting in November, there was, there were concerns expressed with the location of three signs. The bridge, Old Mervyn's Building signs, and the, the, the brand signs at, or.
The bridge, Old Mervyn's building signs, and the brand signs at, or the tower, elevator tower signs. And two of those three signs, two of those three signs are still proposed as part of this application. We're not specifically recommending for or against...
Well, I see. Okay. So as a part of package, you know, being there that you are recommending to include them in the package?
They're, they're included in the application. They weren't, they weren't taken out like the Old Mervyn signs were. The Galleria kept the bridge signs as part of their application, unlike the Old Mervyn signs, which they said, "No, we want those out of the application."
Those signs were at, located at Broadway?
The Mervyns? The Old Mervyns building is right at the intersection of Brandon and Broadway, and there were, in the, in the original application, there were two signs, maybe, well, near the top of the, of the building, right sort of at the intersection.
Central or Branched?
One face, no, one face Brandon, one face Broadway.
So, you know, the Americana case, they were going to go back and redo their design to address the concerns. And I think in your report, when you were giving presentation, you still had concerns, you know, with the bridge signs. And, you know, you just came, came up to the podium and talked about, you know, addressed the issues of those things. So, you know, I guess I'm trying to get clarification from you as to, you know, is this answer good enough for you to accept them? Or are you, do you have concerns with the bridge signs or...
Actually, I was not in meetings that the Galleria people had with council members after the November 10th meeting, so I'm not sure whether their concerns have been addressed or not.
If I may, actually, the bridge discussion, the only concerns that were really raised about the bridge discussion, as Roger said, were really about safety. And so, to the extent that we did not get any negative comments from our transportation folks that the bridge could potentially create safety issues for pedestrians or drivers, we did not see any reason to exclude them. So that's, that's really our position about them.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know.
I think this goes along the same line. The signs at the corner of Broadway and Central?
Broadway and Bran.
Broadway and Bran.
Right. If we move, are there signs proposed for...
No.
Okay.
Not on Central.
All right.
Or near Central.
All right. Very good.
Well, there's near the central entrance. Those are the signs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Right, correct. But it's not near, it's not near Broadway. No. Because you have Nordstrom on one side, and then Macy's on the other side.
Wouldn't the central ads be considered a pedestrian use, since it's...
No, Central is not a designated pedestrian or primarily pedestrian oriented street, according to the downtown specific plan.
The DSP identifies a num, well, several pedestrian, primary pedestrian streets. Two of those are Broadway between, well, it ends, I'll have to, I'll have to get the DSP. It ends, I think, right around Nordstrom's. I don't know how far it continues east, but certainly, certainly up to Brand. And then Brand adjacent to the Americana, and I believe north, is also considered a pedestrian oriented street. Colorado Street adjacent to both the Galleria and the Americana is not considered a primary pedestrian street, nor is Central between the two developments.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that I have had a hard time with in looking at this application is the drawings that you have given to us are sketches, and they have measurements on it. They are not accurate drawings, so I can't really tell if they meet the criteria that you're asking me to approve. They're not architectural or measured drawings. So you could say 70 feet. So I would like to know things like, how wide is Central? You say this is 70 feet. I have something on there. It is just laid out. I can't tell if it truly is. And I'm a trained professional, so I like to lay a stick on it that has little tiny increments that lets me know that what you're showing me is in proportion, and I don't have that. Why did you just sketch things out on top of, you know, a drawing?
Let me interject. I'm sorry. What was, what the Galleria submitted, what were the photos that were included in the applicant, or in the exhibits?
You're asking me, Roger, Mr. Kiesel, to approve something that has measurements on it, and I can't tell you that those fit in that space in a proportion?
Sure, sure.
And that's what you're asking me to do?
Sure. And let me, let me step back. The sketches that were done were actually done by a person in our office, because the dimensions that were shown on the signs, when you made copies, it was, it was hard to see, so we felt, you know, this, this was, was better than just providing the photos. One of the things that I am going to discuss with Mr. Hirsch is providing drawings similar to what the Americana has provided in order for him, in order for them to describe their project in the best way possible. So I, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
If I may, Mr. Chair, in response to the question about the Golden Gate, Golden Key Hotel, if I may, I'd like to bring to your attention page seven, criterion D in the staff report. This is an important, I assure you, nobody on the applicant's team reached staff and said, "Exclude the Golden Key Hotel." Nobody did that. We did not have a conversation with the applicant's team. But staff feels very strongly about introducing a policy that has not been part of the city's policy, in terms of advertising and signage, for a very long time. We're now carving out a section of our downtown that we say, maybe it's worth looking, revisiting this policy and see, maybe there are parts of our business district that may qualify to introduce this kind of advertising. So one thing that we looked at was, very carefully was, once we introduce this, if there are other people in the city who are going to ask for the same treatment, what would be the important criteria? So we introduced criteria D, criterion D, because of the nature of these two particular properties and what they contribute in terms of regional retail and entertainment attraction, that we thought that was an important piece, which the Golden Key Hotel or many other smaller retail areas in the downtown don't necessarily do. So in the future, will we have other projects that may meet this criterion? Possibly. But at this point, these are the only two that meet them.
Ms. Hargani, I hear your argument. All I can tell you is when you take a notch out of a rectangle, you're, you're bordering on gerrymandering. And I would just consider the cleanness of a, of a nice square or rectangle, equal laterals.
Nothing, nobody likes clean, neat, the mouse more than planners do. But if you notice in the DSP also, a particular property is excluded from the same types of standards that are given in the downtown specific.
If I may?
Sure. Mr. Sheets?
I'm thinking along the same lines as Chairman Kane. We can, I mean, I see the logic from a planning standpoint of excluding it, but as we all know, the Golden Key has been significantly impacted from the very beginning of this project. So although it wasn't something we had included in the package, it's hard for me, now that the question has been broached, to not think about the impact that signage and continued growth of Americana will continue to have impact on, on the Golden Key. So I guess my, the one question I was gonna, going to ask of the Americana contact was, now having this question brought up, is there, is there some potential of working in concert with, with that unit as far as how the signage might complement, how it might work? I mean, it's kind of a cold question, I understand that, but is there some potential there that you see that there could be something done jointly to complement each other?
Not likely, because we don't have a hotel on our property, and we don't do that type of thing.
Right.
Quite frankly, we're also just, we're in a position where, because we set a different standard, as does the Galleria, where we're going to have certain standards to our advertising, we're only allowed to advertise what's in our zone, and we're going to an outside advertising company to do that.
Right.
So, you know, the Galleria will go to their company, we go to ours.
I see what you're saying.
There's no, there's no business, you know, working in that regard.
Now discussing it this way, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a situation where if the advertising isn't in conjunction with the overlay zone, it could cause some difficulty, and I, I see that point now. My picture was advertising that would complement the Americana, working in concert with the hotel. So that's kind of where my mind was going. But I see your point, and I understand how that, that could cause some problems. Thank you.
You actually raised something that, that wasn't the way I read the staff report. It was my understanding, and maybe it had been broached, but it wasn't accepted, that the idea was that the Galleria could conceivably advertise things that were happening at the Americana. Your statement didn't sound like that.
No. The two of us are in the proposed zone, so we can advertise what's in that zone.
But you said you have your own advertising thing, and they have their own.
They have their own advertising representatives.
But nonetheless, they, you could conceive, you could conceivably have a Macy's ad. They could conceivably have an ad for a movie that's showing at the theater.
Correct.
Yes.
So that is in the staff? Okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
The last answer I heard caused me to pause to make sure I had understood that.
No, that's correct. But they would not be the same necessarily, as they are not at this point in time, but they would not necessarily be the same sales organization representing those ads.
Understood on that.
So there's no real economy of scale, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Closing remarks from staff?
I don't have any.
All right. Any other questions at this moment from the commission? All right. We'll close public hearing, and then we'll enter into conversation deliberations. Anyone like to weigh in first with their thoughts?
I'll go.
Mr. Lee?
I think, you know, the direction of commission has been, you know, that in the commercial areas where, you know, we've promoted and encouraged and helped to, you know, really the, you know, to, you know, advertise and revitalize the, you know, the commercial areas. And I think, you know, this type of proposal was certainly helping the direction in the tougher, you know, economic situation that we're facing now. And that the sunset clause that they brought up, which, you know, I think, right from the staff, is that they're not really, you know, specific as to, you know, to limit them as, you know, to a 12-month or 24-month, but they are lenient toward, you know, with the, with the timeframe here, just that the concept and the, I guess, philosophy behind, you know, putting the sunset clause in. So my thought is that, you know, to approve this or recommend this, you know, modification, you know, for this zone change, and also to allow five-year sunset clause, the period, five-year period with a four-year review, to allow this Americana and Galleria to, to at least make, you know, physical sense to pursue this project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. What about some of the signs that have been in question, specifically panel one and the, I'll call them the bridge panels?
Well, panel one, I think, has been removed, so I don't think this is a part of the discussion, right?
Which one's panel?
Panel one's the elevator panel on Americana.
Oh, yeah. Elevator Tower.
Americana panel one, yeah.
I'm sorry?
The elevator tower.
It is panel one, or is that a good way to describe it?
You know, I just call it the elevator tower.
Well, elevator tower...
They are discussing.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, they are coming back with modified design, you know, that's more, I guess, suitable to what their concerns were. So they're actually addressing that, so, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as the staff works with the Americana and, you know, to acceptable, you know, the design. You know, I don't think we have to be, you know, really in details about, I think, I think our job is just to, to, you know, recommend to include that in there, with the clause in there, that, you know, they work together to satisfaction of the, of our staff here, planning staff. And I think on the Galleria side, the, one of the other corner panels, you know, that was gone. But then I guess the question was a bridge, you know, the signs. But what I gathered was that those issues were also resolved in the subsequent meetings. So, you know, I'm, I'm accepting that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Sheets?
I appreciate the cooperation between the two, the two groups. That's pleasing to see. I support the effort, as Commissioner Lee said, and it seems to me that the commission's direction has always been to support businesses, especially during this, these tough times. And it seems like something that's, that's, that is very appropriate with certain controls. And it seems that there's been a great deal of cooperation around that whole issue. The one, the one area that I still have concern about, and it relates somewhat to the primarily pedestrian zone, which I'm not sure I totally understand that, but I do know the area. I remember when it was houses. So I can't tell you how many times I go down there and drive Brand and/or Central at Broadway, and the traffic, it doesn't, just because of the sheer size and the sheer volume of traffic and people and pedestrians, it's a difficult place to traverse. It's constant brake screeching, pedestrians stepping out on the street, and that's what I see happening if you have pedestrians looking at signs, or, or even drivers looking at signs. So in my mind, somewhere relative to the pedestrian, primarily pedestrian issue, I have some safety concerns. But they're already there, so I'm not sure the sign, I'm not sure how the signs may or may not change that. But it's something that I, that I think needs to be considered in the, in the future. And the sunset clause seems, clause seems to me that everybody's in agreement, or at least some consensus that there can be one, and it's not an issue, it's just a matter of the timing. And I think the staff should be more than willing to include that in the discussion, say, around the elevator panel, and come up with some conclusion that would be appropriate. I don't have a sense right now of what would be a good time. The 18 to 24 months sounded okay to me in, in the package, but I understand the logic about the economies of scale and the effectiveness, at least from a financial standpoint. So I think that's, that's the only issue holding this thing up. I say, "Let's get moving and get it over with," and I can't see any major issues beyond that.
Thoughts on sunset clauses?
I tend to agree with the, the presentation from the Americana person. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. But...
Lemo.
Lemo. But I, it makes sense to me from a business standpoint that there needs to be some time in there, but I, what was missing for me, and I would, I would hope that the staff would consider this, I'd love to think this is all going to go perfect, and that there are going to be no issues. But I know better. And as I think we all do, it's just common sense. So we need room in there to, to evaluate and assess what does happen and what the impacts are. And my hope would be, based on the cooperation I'm seeing tonight, that everybody would say, "I understand. I see what's happening. We should have done this, or we could have done that." And, and that's what I would want to see in the, I would see some, want to see some consideration around those items in what the staff would come up with for the sunset clause. But we need one, and I think we just need to use that as a way that the city can continue to control. Because, you know, the, the zoning issues are important to the city. It's a major tool to make sure not only that we follow what the plan is of the city, but that we take, take care of the public and the safety. So that's how I feel about that one.
Thank you. Would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'll go. Well, I've always been a big supporter of the Americana. And just for full disclosure, it's six years ago, I was so much in support of it that I did work as an intern while I was in college on the campaign for the company. And I was proud of my work, I was proud of my work there, and I'm happy everything that was proposed did come true. And Americana has been really good for Glendale. I made sure that there was no conflict with Mike Garcia on my vote here today, and I haven't had any relationship with the company since then. I have been approached by them, though... with the company since then. I have been approached by them, though, on this, on this matter, and they have raised the concerns regarding the sunset clause and the restrictions on the elevator tower. I want, I support the Americana, I support the Glendale Galleria, and I think they're assets for the city of Glendale. And I think if there's any way we, what we can do to help them with what they, what they do, I think it helps the city. And I think it's an ongoing partnership, and I think this is one of them as well. With that said, I want, you know, I also have concerns over too many signs, or too much going on. And I, and I do, I am happy with an area that's defined, such as a zone, where we can have restrictions on where we can have signs. And I'm also in favor of having accessory signs, where you can only offer products on the properties for the retail uses they have. And that's probably one reason why we wouldn't be able to include the hotel as part of that. Regarding the, I, the, regarding some of the signs, I do have concerns, I did have concern over the Broadway and brand sign. I did have concern, I do have concern, I'm glad that's taken out of. I do have concerns over the bridge. And I have, over, over this time, I've had, I've developed some concerns over the one on the elevator, and I'm happy that's being revised now. So it's not over just some windows. I would be in support of probably putting a sunset clause on the bridge, the, the ad on the bridge, and the one on the elevator, because I have concerns over that. And I'm not sure exactly what safety hazards that, that bridge advertisement might have. And I think we have to see exactly how that works out. And maybe I would be in support of a five-year plan, a sunset clause for the other, for the other ads, but for that bridge ad and the elevator one, or, or just the bridge, I would be in support of a shorter sunset clause. So those are my thoughts. And then I would also want to make sure that we have some type of agreement if there is new ads being made or developed. We make sure that, you know, that's, I don't exactly quite know how that's happened, if there's new ads that are being inputted into the building or around the Galleria. I want to make sure, you know, how that's restricted and how that's allowed, or what type of development agreement goes into that with, with new types of ads like that. So those are my thoughts. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Landerga?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little more minutia oriented.
No.
There are two, two items that are in the staff report that I, that are interesting to me. I actually was on the design review board when the Americana was approved. And one of the concerns we had at that time is that the panels is designed were going to be for signage. And now they are. So it, it still concerns me. For two reasons, is since 1977, the city of Glendale has really, really effectively stopped a lot of billboards. And, and these are the same size as billboards. So to me, it almost seems like we're backing up. But I understand the context, and I'm not totally opposed to it, but I do have some concerns. And those concerns are based upon a, an interesting item on page seven that says, "The ASOZ sign placement criteria are drafted so as to eliminate potential visual blight, blighting influences from unregulated overcrowding of large wall signs." And there's one place in this proposal where I question that. And that is on the corner of Orange and Colorado, and it's directly adjacent to the Golden Key, which is why I was very surprised that the Golden Key came in with such a generous response as opposed to an opposition. Because I see three signs on that corner, and I see that as a clustering effect that is really going to be blight, visual blight. I can, I, that is the one area I have a real problem with here. It's, if you even look at the fourth picture down on our map, which is called Exhibit A, from my fellow commissioners, you actually can see the two signs together. They're never shown together. They're each shown separately, so they're never shown in the context that they truly are, which is adjacent to each other. And then right around the corner is the young lady on the bottom. So these are three, and they are all directly across from the Golden Key, which in many ways is sort of a residential area. You can't, people do live in hotels, not that we encourage that. But to me, that area is a big area in the Americana plan that I have very big concerns with. I've raised originally some of my concerns with the Glendale Galleria, is that the con, the context does not give me comfort to know if those signs are exact. And for me, for me to even feel comfortable in going forward with it, I would have to have a scaled, measured drawing that shows me the actual proportions. And I'll talk about each one of these specifically. If you go through our pictures that we have here, if I look at the picture that's called Central Avenue Glendale Galleria, it looks totally different than the drawing that unfortunately staff provided, and the scale. So, and I don't know what the scale is. I think the draw, this scale is fine, right here, but that's not how it's drawn. And so I need to see a flat surface, not a skewed surface, that shows it proportionally with the pictures. That is the appropriate way to present something to a body like us to approve. I am fine with this sign. I think this sign, if this is how it is, is out of proportion. It fills the whole wall. I don't see it being in context. And I think this, 70 feet, if, if central is 80 feet, this is a huge sign. I think this is really out of scale and doesn't work. To me, as a designer, I think that I need to see how these look in a context, in a design context. And I don't have those. I have concern, I think council needs accurate visuals to make these decisions. They're not designers. And I, and we do have an engineer, and I'm sure that he would like to lay his scale on it and understand that it's in that correct context. That's one of my recommendations. And I'd like to also say a few things about some of the code as we are looking at it. And I'd like to go to page four of the zoning ordinance recommendation here. There seems to be two different radius elements. If we look at B1 on site map, under number two, it says, "Names and addresses of record owner or owners of property within 300 feet of the project." And then on D, it says, "Location map at a scale of one inch equals 200 with proposed ASOZ site hatched in a 500-foot radius." So my guess, and my hope, is that you meant 500 in both, because it is a big area.
Okay. Actually, can you repeat a little bit of that on page, what?
B.
Page four.
Page four.
Okay.
B, site map, and then number two.
Right.
Where it says 300 feet.
Okay.
And then on D, location map, it says 500 foot.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can look at this again. Site map showing the following information. In all, in all honesty, I'm not sure we want the names and addresses of all the record owners of property within 300 feet on a site map.
Well, no, I'm not saying you do either.
Right. I'm, I'm questioning my own writing.
Okay, all right.
So, okay, yeah, we can, we can look at that.
On number E, same page, photographs of the street of the proposed and the surrounding area. I would recommend that it says, "Street view photographs."
Okay.
I think showing the context of the street from corner to corner is, makes it much clearer.
So more like, like panorama shots?
Yes.
Okay.
On number G, where it says, "Elevation drawings of the buildings, proposed and labeling the heights." One of the things that, this is so large of a property, I think, that it forgets that it is in a context, in a city context. And to show that context, to show the adjacent properties in any of those elements is important. And so for me to see an elevation that might show the context of the Golden Key, and/or across the street, whatever is across brand, and/or across the street on Colorado, that context, so that you can see how close it is, and whether that visual is going to affect somebody, seems to me to be an important element to add to the ordinance.
We're submitted requirements, so you all, okay.
So adjacent properties shown on the, across the street showing elevations, and not just the whole thing, but just where that elevation is, just a corner would suffice of the facade.
Okay.
On page five, on 30.26.060, Regulations for Signs Allowed by the ASOZ. B, you indicate that signs shall be composed of thick, thick gauge vinyl material or other material of equal or better quality. Now, my question is, is, don't you really mean something that guarantees the life of the material? Are you just assuming that this is? Because if you're going to make a specification here, do you want it to have a durability, or do you want to just say this mill? Do you want it to have a sun tolerance, a solar protector? I mean, it is an investment, I think, that whoever's going to put it up is going to care about. But in essence, if you're going to require this somewhere else, anywhere else, I think you need to be more specific in your request for what that material is.
Okay.
On number D, no, I'm sorry, E. Signs shall be incompatible? Do you truly mean that? With the architectural integrity of the building?
No, I do not mean that.
Okay, good. I'm hoping you don't. All right.
You found typo two.
How many are there, so we know when to?
I, I was hoping there were two less than two, but I am mistaken.
Actually, I would like to also add to number D, for consideration, signs may be directly illuminated. No indirect illumination is permitted. Should illumination be proposed, lighting fixtures shall be compatible with the sign framing and architectural style of the buildings. I would like to have you consider, no conduit or external electrical elements shall be permitted.
Restate that last statement. When you say exposed electrical elements, you're not talking about the lights themselves.
No, no.
You're talking about conduits, boxes, gear.
Right.
Panels.
Plot some and jet them on the wall.
Plot some and jet them. Jet some.
Jet some, correct. Thank you.
Okay.
On page, where are the trees? I passed them.
I'm sorry? Where are the what?
Next, next page, six.
Trees, each six at the bottom.
Okay, thank you. Where are those trees?
Tree trimming.
Okay, number six. Well, I have a question on O on six. When you say, "Except with respect to existing signs installed pursuant to a city or agency-approved sign program or other pre-existing entitlement, and except where in conflict with the provisions of this chapter, and any ordinance enacted under and consistent with this chapter, the provisions of Chapter 30.33 shall apply to all signs located within an ASOZ." So does this, in essence, make this part of the sign plan, or is it separate from the sign plan? Because my concern is if there's going to be a total square footage, and if there's a sunset clause, and these are removed, then that total square footage has upped. So they need to, my concern is you already have a sign plan that is approved. Is this separate from the sign plan?
Yes.
I don't think it's clear enough in here.
I think what this is referring to is, and the attorneys can correct me if I'm wrong, is if there are conflicts between this, this overlay zone and the sign regulations, this supersedes it.
Okay. All right.
The purpose of this language was to avoid having to go back and amend the existing sign program that was adopted. This way, I know it's peculiar language, but it's, it's meant to not make the existing sign program subject to the same exact standards as here, because they were considered, you know, differently. And then this would, this could cause unintended consequences if we were not careful about not mixing the two. And I understand your comment about the total square footage matters. However, the sign program that was adopted as part of the town center specific plan was adopted in a completely different policy environment. And this one, we were putting in standards that we didn't consider then and vice versa. So we thought it's better not to mix them. That was the only reason.
But my question is, how does the ASOZ deal with an existing sign plan and adding more signage? So to me, it seems that it, it is going to have a cumulative effect on, certainly on Colorado. We have the small marquee signs that show the, shows that are being shown at the Americana. And then on top, now we're going to have a big one. So now that whole sign impact has increased.
Philip Lansfield, Director of Community Development and Housing.
We'll reopen the public hearing and let you speak.
I, I, let's see if I can answer your question. Well, if you were to combine them, you may increase the sign area, total sign area. But you, the sign program would have specific locations and types of signs. So if it's sunsetted, even if you had that in the, in the specific plan, it wouldn't allow you additional sign area in other locations. Because you would have to have those locations mapped out. Does that help?
It does. So you're, you're really recommending sunsetting then, which was not what Mr. Limo was.
I, I was answering in the context of your statement.
All right.
Well, yeah. And then also, the total, I do understand your comment about the cumulative impact. However, there are total number of signs that are approved under the sign program, and total number of signs that will be approved under this. The, the total will be the, the combination of the two and nothing more, and nothing less.
But they will be separate, and they will be dealt with separately.
And they will be dealt with separately.
New signs.
Right. As two separate programs, yes.
Then let's go to the trees. 30.26.080 on page six. I, "Trees within the public right of ways and private property shall not be unnecessarily pruned or over-pruned to allow better visibility of the signs allowed by the ASOZ." I would like to suggest that trees, any trees required as part of a discretionary approval shall not be removed for any signs allowed by the ASOZ, too. Removal is not addressed in pruning.
Trimmed or removed, how about that?
Correct.
Correct. That's, that's a good.
But I'm not just talking about in the right of ways.
You're talking about both in the right of way and the trees that were approved as part of discretionary approval, both.
Yes, exactly.
And neither, that would be neither trimmed nor removed as, for this purpose. Correct. Understood.
Whether they're on public right of way or on private property.
Correct. Then lastly, I, let's talk about the sunset clause just a little bit. I think it was a very good point. I think that an investment needs to, I would like to see your numbers, because I, I think it's a really good point, and I think that you need to ask that that sunset clause go to that. But I think if you're going to extend it at all, it should be, and my concern is, certainly to protect council and everyone else, this is, to me, like, taking our whole billboard stance and changing it. And how is that really going to affect what we have set into process, and I think it's a And I think it's a new age, it's a new world, it's a different economic time, and I think we need to look at it. But I think that sunset clause, if it's gonna be extended past this, should be required instead of arbitrary. And to me, if you're gonna make it five years, then you say, all ASOZ zones will have a sunset clause and will be reviewed every five years with the option. So I think if it's gonna be extended, it becomes a mandatory sunset clause, and if it's not, then I think going with the lesser of the two seems to be realistic. Those are the concerns that I, that I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, I'll preface this by saying that I was also a supporter of the Americana development. I didn't volunteer, I did an intern, I just sat back and hoped it would happen. I'm pleased that time has passed, and the Hatfields and McCoys have found a way to live together. I think it cost everyone a lot of money that could have been avoided, but that's years ago now. I also recognize that, especially in these economic times, with the way car sales are going, and what that means to our city in terms of that, that district, basically, the Galleria and Americana are pretty much the economic engine that this city has. We don't have a business tax, we don't have any other terrific sources of income, so, you know, it is an important feature of the city. All that said, I'm kinda crinterian. Philosophically, I consider advertising signage to be blight. As nice as it is, slapping a billboard on the side of a building is still an advertisement, and it's still something that's taken away from a building. And again, just from a very personal basis, not serving as a redevelopment person, but maybe more as a planning person, as harsh as it sounds, I consider it blight. I also recognize the economic aspects of things. So with that, and knowing my predisposition to blight, to me, the shortest sunset clause we have, the better. If we establish a five-year sunset clause, the fact is, this is forever. It's never gonna disappear. We have to start looking and seeing what other things are gonna start creeping in. Mr. Lee prefaced earlier an interest in electronic or LED type signage. I see a vibrancy, we, many of us have been to LA Live, and in that environment, there's a great vibrancy into that area, but it's, it's a different district that I feel, as far as what the Americana Galleria District is. I also see a smaller scale LED type thing, where it's more like, let's say, kiosk size, as opposed to billboard size, maybe being a little more appropriate. Again, philosophically, when I've already told you how I feel about billboards in general, you can imagine how I feel about the idea of LED, and movement, and so on. I guess I'm an old fogey that way. So, so to me, the shorter the sunset, within reason, you know, a year seems to be kinda quick. Five years seems to be way long. I think something along, along the neighbor of two years needs to be pursued. One of the things we're hearing, oh, well, you know, there's a certain investment to be made, and there absolutely is. But maybe that investment also needs to be taken in small steps. Now, I don't recall how the development deal works here, but I think with, with both cases, the city's revenues are based on, on sales tax, correct?
Yes, and I'm going to ask, Sir Lansfield, to ask more detailed questions, answer.
It's about as detailed as it's gonna get. It's sales tax. So any, any, any benefit that our city sees as a result of this advertising is gonna be indirect. It's gonna be measured by improved sales, whether, and, and being able to track whether it's due to these, these billboards have been plastered on the side of the building, I love using reactionary language like that, or whether it's, you know, whether it's due to these billboards, or whether it's just due to an improved economic climate, it's gonna be a little tough to measure. So that said, as this moves forward to council, one of the things that, if, if we're gonna sell our souls, again, being a little reactionary in my language, I would like to see, it had been broached in the conversation, some sort of revenue sharing situation whereby the city, and the Americana, and the Galleria, where the city has a little more sure, share, and can see in real dollar terms what they're getting for the benefit that they're giving to these, you know, to these retail magnets. So I would urge a shared, shared sales type of, or not a shared sales, but a participatory type of thing, as it relates to the revenue that the Galleria and Americana are getting from the billboards. I share Commissioner Landergan's comments about some of the information we're, we're being given. I think it was a good effort, and I think it was an honest effort, but it falls short. And the lack of scale, as has been noticed, is problematic, and the lack of context, where you have three signs all within a few feet of each other, and yet each sign is presented separately, is unintentionally misleading, but misleading nonetheless. So some of the presentation stuff needs to get worked on. I won't belabor that. I've kinda made clear where I'm coming from philosophically. We're gonna make our opinions known to the, to the City Council slash Redevelopment Agency, and they can take it from there. Further comments from commissioners?
Well, I don't know, maybe I would like to be very clear and say that I am opposed to the signs over the bridge, probably even scaled. I'm opposed to those three signs there. I think they do meet, they do not pass the nexus of not contributing to visual blight. And, and those are the areas that, you know, I totally agree with you, Mr. Chair, that these are billboards, and we're reinstituting a billboard ordinance, and it bothers me very much. But that said, I think that if it's tastefully done, and it has a timeline to review it, and I agree, I think the time period that was proposed needs to be really substantiated, but I think two years, I do think it should be a required sunset clause, and not, I would like to recommend to the council that they require it. I think it's good for the city in the long run, if we're gonna do something that's changing course so large a way.
Mr. Sheets?
I'll just make, he wants to speak, so I just wanted to remind you of that, if we can go ahead.
We oppose the public.
I understand, I understand. But I don't disagree with any of the detail, I think they're, they're very good. My only change in thinking is, I lean towards the stricter timeframe on the sunset clause, just from the issue that I spoke to, some control, some monitoring, and I, based on the scale of this project, I'd hate for us to get five years down the road and realize that we've got this thing, and not be too reactionary in my approach, that we couldn't do anything about, or to do anything might be difficult or might cause animosity. So I don't know what the timeframe is, and maybe there's some logic that can be discussed, but I think, I think there really needs to be some thought around the timeframe, shortening it, or not, not letting it be too long, like five or six years. So I support that thinking.
I, I support what Stephanie said about the concerns I have with the bridge, and I would support a short, you know, just a specific sunset clause, maybe for just that, for just that sign, because there may be safety issues, or, you know, if there's extra accidents happening on that street because of that sign, how would we stop it? And, you know, if we did have a five-year plan, sunset clause for that, then it would be hard to stop it. So I don't know, I don't know if we could do maybe two sunset clauses, but I would support maybe a small version for just the bridge, for just the bridge ad, and then maybe a bigger version for, for the, for the rest of the ads. What, what my concern is with very short sunset clause for the rest of the ads, is because most of these ads are just advertising what's in the buildings, you know, and like, for example, the ones in front of the Galleria on Central, I think it's very helpful to have that, because it'll, it'll, you know, it advertises and informs what, informs other people at the Americana what's available inside the Galleria. And I think that helps with the cross-connectivity. I think maybe having a short sunset clause for just those ads, and then adding a bunch of restrictions on them, I don't know exactly how fair that might be, but I would probably support, you know, a very short timeframe on, on the bridge, maybe like six months, and then, and I know that wasn't proposed, but I just have a lot of concerns over that, because that's never been proposed in Glendale. And then a longer one, two years or more, for the, for the rest of the ads. And then I wanna also make sure that whenever there are, whenever there are new ads, we do make sure, you know, a special development agreement has gone in for those ads, and, you know, if there is any revenue sharing, we can do it for the new ads that happen. Because they're, in addition to what is proposed now, and what's proposed now, I think it does a good job in informing the people around there, and the pedestrians around there, of what's happening, and the activities in the Americana and the Galleria.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I, I need a clarification on one of the comments that Mr. Asaiun said. When, I still, I'm not completely following, if there are new ads, that the new development, development agreement be drafted, I don't quite follow it, that concept is.
I know, I know we don't have quite, like, a development agreement established, that's why we can't do this, but I wanna make sure, you know, if there are new ads, it goes through that process of a development agreement.
New ads in terms of?
New ads on billboards.
In terms of changing out?
No, adding, adding to.
Adding to.
Adding to the zone.
Okay.
Or an amendment to the.
Correct.
Oh, that would just, okay, I got it.
Well, since everybody made a comment, I wanna, wanna make my comment as well. I don't think this, while you refer to this billboard, the, the ad signs are, it's, you know, it's not, it's not science, you know, it's, it's been around, everybody knows what it does, and, and everybody has a different sort of opinions, and my opinion is, I think it could be, you know, you know, I don't, I don't see it as a blight. And I see it as an effective tool to promote, you know, the, the businesses in the malls. And, you know, I think the only concern that, that I might have is the safety issues, but I think if those things were addressed, because I think a lot of the, the concentrated effort here is, is on the, you know, what, you know, what type of effect it'll have, as far as the, you know, the, the looks of it, and things like that, and the size of it. But like I said, you know, it, you know, it's, it's around, it's all, you know, it's around, surrounding us, you know, we live with it. So I don't, I don't think, you know, it is something that, oh yeah, we need to test this. It is already tested, it is already out there. We know what it's gonna look like. So I don't know why we're having this discussion. As far as making the decisions, as to, you know, really, you know, we need to, I think, then, then, you know, set the guideline here, saying, okay, you know what, we know what it's gonna look like, even though it might not be to the scale. And, you know, but we have general ideas, what it, you know, what it's gonna look like, and how it's gonna affect, affect, and, you know, you have to weigh, what is the benefit versus what is the, you know, you know, the negative aspect of this, this project is. And I, you know, and you talk about also, you know, shortening the, you know, the sunset clause, the, the length of it. Now, I did, you know, read it through the, this resolution that I guess we're proposing twelve months, because, you know, it talked about in the report eighteen to twenty-four months, but in the, the new resolution we received, it talked about twelve months. And any project, and I'm a businessman, you know, when you say that type of, you know, handcuff, the developers will handcuff, you know, the, the malls or the businesses, you know, when they're investing so much money, and like I said, my opinion of the, of the, those billboards are, it's a good advertisement tool, so, you know, I think we need to be a little bit more on the linear side. And, you know, like I said, you know, the only way, only reason why you wanna put these restrictions, and, you know, is to have control, but at the same time, if we do not know anything about this, then we, we want to see this. But, you know, my, my argument is, is that we already know what this is gonna look like, what, you know, that this has been around for many, many decades. So I think, you know, we could, you know, we could make the decision, as far as, you know, setting the rules, setting the, you know, the amount of time that we can set here, and then make that final recommendation. And I'd like to say, you know, if not five years, but then I think two years is still, you know, still limiting for this, you know, people.
I mean, just to, I think I totally agree with what Commissioner Lee says, because these aren't signs we're just putting up on, like, West Hollywood, or, you know, just regular signs we're putting up, which we really don't know what's gonna happen in a year or so, you know? So, so I don't really see the value in that, of having that limitation for those signs, because we, it seems like we know what the effects are gonna be, the impacts are gonna be, although just for that one sign, everything else, it seems, it seems pretty straightforward, at least for me.
Well, just to kinda summarize a little bit about what we're hearing, and in terms of our motion, we're basically gonna make a motion to generally recommend the sign ordinance, with the comments that have been noted, and we don't have to build all that into our, our general motion support, or whatever you wanna assemble. But what I'm hearing is, in terms of the sunset clauses, or for that matter, approval, the, you know, in general, people are okay with the program. The only areas that there seems to be some nervousness or concern, is a better word, is with the bridge signs, and especially for my part, that elevator sign that's six way the heck up and is so pronounced. So those two signs are, I think, are the weak part of the whole program. It may be that Americana slash Galleria may wanna proceed forward with a slightly reduced program in exchange for a longer sunset, for let's say the signs that seem less problematic, and then that demonstrated success may be something they can spring forward on. But regardless, we have a little bit of, of differences of opinion as it relates to sunset signs, and what signs are sensitive and what are not. Unless there's some concluding remarks, I think we've kind of, in general, had our say, and I'd suggest we sort of wrap up this part of the discussion, and, and carry forward a recommendation toward, to council as it relates to this overlay ordinance. Can the recognition of the mitigated negative deck be part of one motion, or is it two?
We have, we have a second revised motion, I'm sorry, it's right.
It's recommended to just adopt them in one motion.
And adopt in one motion, great.
Oh, you want to adopt it as one?
So as we prepare the motion, whoever would like to do that, just recognize the negative, negative mitigated, mitigated negative declaration.
Before you do that, could I interject and ask for some clarification? You had mentioned that, in general, you're okay with, with the project, except for the bridge signs and elevator tower sign. Ms. Landergan also expressed concern regarding three signs.
When you say you, you're saying the commissioner's.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
In general.
And when she mentioned those three signs, I was gonna interject with, do you mean the three signs on Colorado?
There are two signs on Colorado, adjacent to each other, one on Orange, right around the corner, and they are actually all abutting the marginalized Golden Key Hotel.
Okay. Let me, yeah, let me clarify that. There's one sign on Orange Street, and they're actually, there are three signs on Colorado right in that area. There are two signs.
Not according to this.
Two are only shown.
In that corner on Colorado.
There's one on Orange, and there's a larger sign on Colorado, right next to two smaller signs of equal size.
Well, that's not what the key is.
That's not what the joint.
Oh, then the whole deal's off.
Okay, actually, it's hard to see, but you've got a sign here, and then two signs here.
Okay, that just goes back to our statement about, a little more work required on context and.
Yeah, it's probably, if you, if you look.
It, I mean, it shows.
And I still do have a problem with it.
It shows.
Okay, that was, that was where the, that was where my clarification was. Okay.
It does show it, I mean.
Understood, it's just a little hard to make all the.
Right. Would you like me to include that in the overall?
Consensus of opinion?
Yeah. So the four signs near the intersection of Orange and Colorado.
If I may, Mr. Chair, what I've heard is, is not exactly the direction to recommend removal of those signs, but expression of concern over the bridge sign, maybe the one idea was to give that a shorter sunset clause, and then a concern that Ms. Landergan has expressed over the corner of Colorado and Orange signs, the clustering and the, the way that they may visually interact, it was not necessarily to remove them or reduce them, but that, that the aspect of the clustering, and how they may interplay with one another, is a concern that needs to be addressed. And then I also heard the, again, from the chair, if I heard it correctly, was a concern over the side. chair, if I heard it correctly, was a concern over the size of the elevator shaft sign.
Not just the existence thereof.
And the existence thereof. So, so would you like, I mean, if you'd like, you could incorporate these concerns as, as concerns in your motion? Or if you'd like to address each one of them specifically as part of a recommendation, you're welcome to do that too.
I think, go ahead, Ms. Landergan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I am concerned with the size of the signs as illustrated. I may not have concern with the signs of the Glendale Galleria if I saw them contextually. But as illustrated, I have concerns with the size of those signs.
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is we have five different opinions that have actually quite a bit of, of space between them, overlapping areas of agreement. And I don't know how you can concisely put that into a motion other than
Comments?
Someone will say, Planning Commission supports, General supports, well, however they want to do it, and ask staff to prepare a synopsis of the various remarks and concerns expressed by the commission as it prepares its report to Planning, or its report to City Council. Or is it redevelopment or both?
It's both.
Okay. Something along those lines. How does that sound, fellow commissioners?
I think it's great as long as we throw in the mitigated negative deck too.
And, Mr. Chair, if I'm added, the, the changes to the zone tax amendment that iterated by Commissioner Landergan, I think staff and legal think that those are good changes. So that should be part of the motion as well.
All right. Who'd like to prepare that, or who'd like to make that motion?
I'll give a shot.
All right, Mr. Lee?
I'm going to be, I'm not going to be specific, but I, assuming that you took the notes, so I'm going to kind of bundle that in. I move that up on consideration of the proposed ordinance relating to the development of ASOZ, a map change to allow the ASOZ within the boundaries of the Galleria and Town Center districts of the DSP and a zone tax amendment to Chapter thirty point thirty-three, signs, in parentheses. The Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to Title thirty of the Glendale Municipal Code, comma nineteen ninety-five, with mitigated negative declaration and the synopsis of comments and concerns made by each commissioners.
Recognize the negative mitig
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I did.
You missed that. I was
But do we want to add with the changes to the ordinances?
Yeah, with the changes to the ordinances. Yes. As mentioned by Ms. Land.
Second, motion and support call roll, please.
Commissioner Landergan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Yesaien?
Aye.
Chairman Kane?
No. On a vote of four to one, the Planning Commission has made a recommendation to City Council that zoning change cases PZON two thousand nine dash zero zero eight and PZON two thousand nine dash zero nine be adopted with comments as referenced in the motion. All right. Uh, Planning Department updates.
I don't have any updates.
One thing, as you know that we're doing our outreach efforts to, for the census count, we encourage everyone at home to participate in the census. If they receive a questionnaire, please fill it out and be counted.
Early and often. All right.
Are we all going to the Alex meter?
Comments from commissioners? I just, I just have two. Looking ahead just in terms of appeals and things like that, and the idea, it's always nice to have five commissioners. I will not be here for the first meeting in June.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Landesfam.
And then I may have missed an oral communication. I'm not sure. I didn't realize that it was, it was speaking, that there was a card turned in for something other than on our calendar. You know, reference three twenty-seven Sound Street. The gentleman's name was Eric and begins with an M. But there's a phone number here and I would ask someone from staff to please call him and find out if we inadvertently missed him during oral communications.
Well, ask the case planner, who, who's working on that project to call him.
Okay. All right. So I will leave this card out so that somebody can make contact because I did not want to miss the speaker for that purpose. Anything else from commissioners?
One quick comment. I attended a meeting the other evening regarding the, um, the Riverwalk, which is, you know, to a lot of people in the city, maybe not significant, but it is a significant project. It's rather large for that area. But it's, it's a, it's a real, I think it's going to be a special project for the whole community when you see what, what it's about. So I just would recommend that anybody that hears about that or sees any information, find out what it's about, see what they think. Because there's a lot of elements to it relative to landscaping, relative to horse property, relative to linking up with, with the Griffith Park area, some bridges being recommended across the LA River, which I think is significant. So it's, it's a pretty unique project. And I went to a second meeting with the stakeholders for the bike plan. I don't know the actual acronym, but they have a lot of effort. It's, it's the one that, that Bogart is, is representing. So there's a lot of stakeholders that are, have put a lot of time into this and it's going to encompass the whole city. So it's something that we all need to be aware of, how that, the bike lanes and such are going to impact future plans and decisions. But in addition to that, we have a lot, a lot of bike riders in this city and a lot of bike riders that go through this city. So it's going to have an impact to all of us in all our future decisions. So just I share that. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.